We'll call the order of the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June 15th, 2023. Please stand and join us through Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowell, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner Heikala?
Here.
Commissioner Bradley?
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Heikala, second by Knoblock. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And the agenda is adopted. Next is the approval of our minutes of our April 20th, 2023 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes. I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmalki. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And the minutes are approved. Our first case for the evening is planning case 23-14, a preliminary plat for Lawrence Estates, second edition, Joanne and Douglas Lawrence. Mr. Crowell.
All right, good evening, Planning Commission. Our first item tonight, the applicants requesting preliminary plat approval to create four single-family residential lots and one outlot. So we're talking about the parcel ID 0431240030 between Coon Creek Boulevard and Verdun Street. This parcel is currently zoned low-density residential two. And again, there's a preliminary plat proposal to create four new single-family home residential lots and then one outlot. The applicant also owns the parcel to the south of this lot, and so the outlot will remain undeveloped with this plat with the idea that it could be kind of replat whenever the parcel kind of to the south would kind of be developed in the future there. This was just to kind of give an idea in case kind of the area we're talking about in the city, so you see kind of if you kind of go from the main entryway to Lowe's and that development and kind of go up Coon Creek Boulevard here a little bit, that's kind of the part of the neighborhood we're talking about. And so looking at the plat itself, the parcel is 3.74 acres or about 163,000 square feet. Lot 1, 2, and 3 would each be 80 feet wide and 130 feet long for a total of 10,800 square feet, and that is the minimum standard that we have for residential lots in LDR two. So it meets that standard. And then Lot 4 would be 90 feet wide and 135 feet long, just a little over 12,000 square feet there. So on those first three lots, there's about 3,900 square feet of buildable area for the structure to meet all of the setbacks in LDR two. And then that fourth lot, that's a slightly larger lot, has about 4,500 square feet of buildable area for a home. And so then the outlot A, like I mentioned, would be remain undeveloped at this time and owned by the applicant, and that's about 2.47 acres there. There are, there's a 10-foot drainage and utility easement provided along the street frontage for lots 1 through 4, and then 5-foot easements along the side and rear lot lines, and those would be the minimums, again, that we would require on new plats. The subdivision of land results in additional development, and this can cause additional demand on our park and recreation facilities. And so in our subdivision ordinance, we would require a park dedication fee of $2,000 per residential lot for this plat. And so you'll see that in the conditions of approval there. And then I also included the comments from Anoka County. So whenever a plat has direct access or kind of borders a county road, and in this case, Coon Creek Boulevard is a county road, they also like to review the plat for some additional comments. There were some comments in there about the right-of-way, and I had a condition in there. The applicant and Anoka County have worked together to kind of resolve that issue, so they're not requesting any additional right-of-way with this plat and would kind of wait until that outlot and kind of the lot to the south of here would ever be developed in the future with a plat there, then they can kind of work on or request right-of-way. And then there was another comment in there about a suggestion of creating a flag lot versus creating a larger outlot. And I think planning and engineering staff, we kind of hesitate a little bit in creating a flag lot because it can just kind of create some other issues when you kind of essentially have someone in the backyard of someone else's property and can be a little odd. And so since these, this parcel and the one to the south are under the same ownership, we felt kind of going this outlot direction and leaving it available for development in the future kind of made sense there. So kind of with that, the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of the preliminary plat. And again, you can see some of the different conditions there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and we also have the applicants here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. I believe one correction to your description. I believe I heard you say lots 1, 2, and 3 were 80 feet by 130, where they're 135.
Oh, correct, yeah. So they would be 80 feet by 135 feet. So yeah, sorry, I misspoke there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell at this time? Is petitioner present, and anything they'd like to add? Nothing, all right. All right, we do need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 23-14, preliminary plat for Lawrence Estates, second edition, Joanne and Douglas Lawrence. Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Limit comments to the commission.
I have just one question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Is that current outlot A as proposed, is that part of the sod business right now? Or is it with the southern?
Yeah, that would be a question for the applicant if that's part of their sod production. I don't believe so, but that would be probably a question for them to answer.
Okay.
Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Brian Person. I'm with Hawkinson Anderson. We did the land surveying and engineering for the Douglasses, or the Lawrencees, sorry. 16544 Packard Street, Hanley, Minnesota, is my address. The outlot right now is not part of the current sod farm. It's all, it's entirely wooded. This whole parcel is covered in trees, so it's not growing sod at this time.
Did you say the south parcel is covered?
The south parcel that they own south of this year is all part of the sod farms, yes.
That is, okay.
Yeah.
But the outlot A is wooded?
It's all wooded at this time, yeah. Yep, covered in trees.
Yeah, I didn't know that was, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, just a question as far as the layout of Lot 4 there, you know, it kind of is going to truncate the ability for 129 to be further extended. I'm assuming that the county's concern is about further direct access off of Coon Creek Boulevard is probably their long-term concern there. You know, did the city have any concerns of that? I know further north, there's a stub called the SAC on that from there, but you know, the way it looks, it's like, and considering that the property south of Verdun is fully developed and 129, that will close off that right-of-way at that point, and the road could never be extended? Is that a concern, which basically forces access off of Coon Creek Boulevard for any future development?
Yeah, I know that I had talked with our city engineer a little bit about that, and we didn't really have too much concern, particularly since there's already kind of connections there on Verdun Street, kind of as if it was kind of already laid out to eventually kind of have these lots along Verdun Street. I know the, in the county comments, that they wouldn't want any additional access from outlot A onto Coon Creek Boulevard, so we'd have to use kind of the existing access points on the sod production parcel there for that kind of redevelopment in there. But we didn't share any kind of immediate concerns or big concerns with kind of closing off 129th Ave.
Okay, so just to kind of restate it a little bit, if with this platting effectively, outlot A can't really be developed with other road access until the further south already existing access off of Coon Creek would be leveraged at the same time?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I am willing to make a recommendation of approval of planning case 2314, recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, that all engineering comments be addressed, the applicant work with Anoka County to ensure adequate right-of-way is provided with the final plat, a park dedication fee of $8,000, which represents $2,000 per lot for four lots, is paid prior to releasing the plat for recording, the applicant verify proof of ownership of outlet A, Lawrence Estates, second edition, prior to releasing the plat for recording, at least one street tree is required to be planted on each lot at the time of issuing the building permit, and any deferred and or postponed assessments attached to the lot be paid at the time of development.
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Heikala. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And the motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be introduced by the City Council at the July 5th meeting. Good luck. Our second case this evening is planning case 23-12, an ordinance amendment for home occupations, city, city code sections, excuse me, 11-304 and 11-1210. Mr. Crowell.
All right, our second item here is the commission is asked to consider a zoning ordinance amendment, and so it's kind of two parts. It would remove section 11304.2 for home occupation permits and then add section 111210 home occupations. So planning staff, we've identified, you know, some short and long-term changes to help update our zoning code and to clean up some different inconsistencies in our code and to try to better align with some current trends. And so we've kind of identified some different updates related to home occupations, wall signs, PUD regulations, and kind of some general housekeeping in our LDR 1 and 2 districts. And so that was kind of presented at a January 19th work session with the commission, just to kind of give an idea of a proposed work plan from staff. And then the changes that you see here tonight, they were shared at a city council work session on April 11th, and then again with you all in an April 20th work session. The main feedback kind of from both of those seemed to relate to delivery vehicles, and so we kind of addressed or revised some things since that work session and incorporated it in the proposal you see tonight. Otherwise, from both work sessions, it seemed there was general support for the changes, and so we as staff just kind of took that as this was an okay thing to proceed with and have the changes outlined here. Just some background again, Coon Rapids is one of the few cities kind of really in the metro that requires a formal public hearing and commission approval for a home occupation. There are a few cities that do have a permit, and if they do, they're often just approved by staff kind of administratively and not necessarily through the planning commission. Staff were aware and kind of speculate that many residents kind of operate a home occupation already today without a permit, whether they're just not aware that they need a permit or not, and that we receive very few resident complaints about home occupation permits. Our property maintenance staff, when they do get a complaint, it's more related to things like auto repair or uses that aren't permitted home occupations to kind of begin with. So kind of with that, you know, some of the goals that we have in this proposed change are to align the code with current trends, kind of related to remote work, and to better align with our peer city practices, kind of removing some standards that are just pretty impractical or difficult for our staff to enforce. And then kind of with that, clarify the ability for property maintenance staff to enforce the standards. I think how it currently lives in our administrative section of the code, I know our property maintenance staff have shared sometimes it's difficult to enforce some of the standards because people will interpret it that those standards only apply to people that have permits, and that's really not the case. And so this first notable change kind of with this ordinance amendment would be to remove the home occupation permits from chapter 11300, our administrative section or chapter of the code, and move that to our general district standards, so it's really applied to all zoning districts in the city. And so kind of with that change, it would remove the need for a home occupation permit and remove the public hearing aspect of that, but again, would outline all of the standards that a home occupation would have to continue to follow to be a legal home occupation. Some other changes kind of with the standards that would be in chapter 111200, we did update our prohibited home occupations list. Two that I would just note, tattoo parlors, they have their own kind of state licensing and different requirements. And then with gun sales, you have to have a federal firearms license, and there's a lot of other kind of standards and things at play. And so we just kind of felt like kind of the local zoning code or property maintenance staff weren't really the right people to be enforcing that. There's already kind of other jurisdictions or other agencies kind of involved in that enforcement, so it's really just trying to remove some of those things from our list. And then increasing the permitted hours of public operation for home occupations. And then finally, the other big change, like I mentioned, removing some of the standards that are kind of what we feel are impractical or difficult to enforce, and so they're kind of related. We had a standard around minimum garage space being needed, that the home occupation couldn't occupy more than 400 square feet in the home. And a lot of those things would really require staff to kind of go inside people's homes, and it just felt a little bit intrusive and kind of not really practical for us to enforce and doesn't really cause any issues. So you would see those kind of removed from the standards with this amendment. Kind of upon your recommendation and reviewing tonight, this would then go to the council to be introduced at their July 5th meeting, and then would be voted on by the council at their July 18th meeting. And then kind of upon any adoption or changes to our home occupation code, staff, we would be working with our communications team to help with informing residents on these changes and kind of being clear that there are still standards they have to follow. And so we do some different updates to our website, create a new resident handout that we can share with folks, update our land use application, put it in the city newsletter, those sorts of things would be in the works to help inform and educate residents on the change. So our staff recommendation, I have it broken up into two pieces just to kind of address the two different ordinances, so it'd be recommending approval to remove that home occupation section in 11304, and then recommending approval to add the home occupation section under 111210. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, so with it broken up, the staff would prefer two actions on this from our, on our part?
Yeah, I guess I don't know if they could just be combined as one. I just thought since they were kind of two different ordinances, it might be cleaner to have two different motions. I don't know if Blair, if you have a thought at all?
That's purely a preference.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 2312, an ordinance amendment for home occupations, city code sections 11304 and 111210. Anyone wish to speak to this case on the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing and limit comments to commission. Commission? Commissioner Knoblock.
If the commission has no questions or comments, I'd like to make, just make a motion for recommendation. In planning case 2312, recommend approval of an ordinance removing home occupation permits under application and pending, and amending city code section 11304. And then corollary to that, in planning case 2312, recommend approval of an ordinance adding home occupations under general district standards and adding city code section 1111210.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And those motions carried. This is a recommendation by this planning commission and will be introduced by the City Council at the July 5th council meeting. Our next order of business is planning case 2313, an ordinance amendment for temporary signs and wall signs, city code sections 111203.6 and 111203.7. Mr. Crowell.
All right, so the last item I have here is zoning ordinance amendment that would revise language related to temporary signs and then revise the maximum wall area allowed for wall signs. So again, as I mentioned, this was kind of looped in with some other items that we were looking to change in the code, just to help clear any inconsistencies and help kind of align with current trends. So again, this was shared with you at the January 19th work session, and then again in an April 20th work session. Feedback again seemed to be fairly positive, no major changes, and so we just kind of felt that it was okay to kind of move forward and present what we have tonight. Some background here on the signage, we've granted several variances in the last few years related to commercial signage to exceed our current allowance, and this has been primarily on our big box retail stores. We currently, in kind of general commercial, in some of our other commercial districts, have a 200 square foot maximum, and for some larger big boxes with pretty big walls, it's just a little bit restrictive in some of the signage that they'd like to do. We've seen some other, like minor little inconsistencies on some of the wall area allowances in our zoning districts, so just kind of cleaning that up a little bit. And then wanting to remove some content-based references to temporary real estate and temporary construction signs to make that content neutral. So here again, the goals with these changes is to align the code with current market trends and peer city practices, hopefully to reduce the need for future variances, particularly for larger commercial and industrial buildings. I guess I'll mention too, in addition to some of the big box stores, I know we've had some of our industrial tenants, particularly Torque Fitness, reach out to us in the past for some different ideas on signage that they'd like to do. And in our industrial district currently with that 100 square foot kind of maximum, it kind of limits some signage that they want to do along the freeway when they have a larger wall. So hopefully it could help maybe address some of those items for larger businesses, and again, to clean up that problematic content-based references in our zoning code. So you'll see in the staff report, just kind of again, a more kind of content-neutral re-language of the temporary real estate and construction signs, so that's how it would be phrased with the change. I won't read it here, but it's in the staff report on that change. And then again, the other notable change is just the revising the maximum area per wall allowed for wall signs. I'll note that we currently have the 10% of the wall to a maximum of 200 square feet, and a lot of these changes would keep that 10%, but make it a maximum of 300 square feet. And so really not too big of a change, it'll really only impact, again, those big box retail stores and industrial buildings that can do the larger signs. We're still keeping that 10%, which is really kind of more of the determining factor on the sign there to keep it kind of in scale with the wall. So that's not changing. It's really just that maximum that'll really only impact larger retail, big boxes and some larger industrial buildings. Again, kind of just cleaning up to better align the office and neighborhood, commercial, those are often kind of bordering low-density residential two districts, so I just wanted to try to clean that up and make that a little bit more consistent across those two districts, slightly increasing wall signage for multifamily and then institutional uses again, and since those are often in residential districts, just to kind of make it more standard across those uses. So here again, kind of upon your consideration and recommendation, it would go to the council on July 5th for an introduction, and then would be voted on by the council on July 18th. And again, we kind of work with communications to help with businesses, some updates to our website and a handout and those sorts of things if any changes are adopted. So again, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell? Hearing none. Need a public hearing in this matter, so I will open a public hearing in planning case 2313, an ordinance amendment for temporary signs and wall signs, city code sections 111203.6 and 111203.7. Anyone wish to speak to public hearing on this case? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close public hearing and limit comments to commission. Commission, thoughts, concerns, motions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
I'd like to move that in planning case 2313, we recommend approval of an ordinance revising temporary signs and wall signs and amending city code sections 111203.6 and 111203.7.
Second.
I'll give it to Commissioner Schmalki. Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be introduced by City Council at the July 5th council meeting. On to other business. Mr. Crowell.
Yeah, so for our July commission meeting, we have a plat for the former Berry Plastics site kind of over on Coon Rapids Boulevard, where some of that Foley reconstruction was there. And then we might have a couple of site plan extensions from last year, but otherwise no new site plans or anything for the July meeting.
All right. I have an issue that kind of pertains to that last case we had talking about signage. Do we have anything currently in our sign ordinances? And I guess I'm looking to Mr. Buchicconi specifically, that covers the removal of signs once a business has gone out of business or has left a building? The particular case that I'm talking about is down at 80 Coon Rapids Boulevard, where Hope for Youth Family or Youth Services went into. The building had used to have a dance group and kids' time childcare, has a huge sign along the Boulevard that is obviously still there. This picture was just taken yesterday. This picture was just taken yesterday. And Youth for Hope, or Hope for Youth has been in that building, I believe, probably going on three or four years. Is there anything we can do to get a sign such as this removed?
Offhand, I'm not entirely sure. My initial response is I don't think there's an ordinance that directly applies. That being said, I think staff will have a conversation, will look into it, and probably have a conversation with that property owner. Mr. Chair.
Is this possibly a area that we could consider adding in addition to our signage ordinance to cover that when a building or business moves out of a business, they have X number of days to remove any signage?
We can certainly have that conversation. I would, there's a number of legal issues that come to mind, Mr. Chair, but first I want to make sure there isn't already something existing that I'm just not aware of. And then the next steps, of course, are the vetting process, if that's something we should do. And those legal issues that immediately pop to mind, we'll address through that process if we think it's appropriate. But I think one avenue we can take is to reach out to the landowner and see what we can do.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else with anything for other business?
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmuckey. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.